All right. Welcome, everybody, to the April 11th, 2024 City of Edina Planning Commission meeting. On behalf of the rest of the planning commission, we're grateful you're here in person or those tuning in remotely. I'll say it every time. But your curiosity, your participation, your feedback is vital as we navigate change together here in Edina, specifically regarding the ways in which we'd like to use our land. On that note, your input matters. We collect public input through the city's engagement website, BetterTogetherEdina.org. We commit to you that everything you've submitted has made its way to us and will be considered as we make recommendations tonight regarding two specific matters. We have two public hearings on the docket. I'll get into that process and what to expect later. But until then, for those who are tuning in remotely and would like to participate in the public hearings, you can get ready now by joining the virtual queue and waiting room. Please call the number 312-535-8110 and enter access code 2633-139-0260. The password is 5454. And when you'd like to get in the queue to speak, you'll push star three. I'll go over that again because that's really easy to memorize. You'll state your full name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. So with that, we'll get right into the meeting, which starts with a call to order. And then roll call.
Commissioner Al-Khair.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Padilla.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner who?
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Bornstein.
Here.
Commissioner Felton.
Here.
Commissioner Hanneman.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. All right. Next, we have the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. Welcome. A motion to approve.
I'm moved to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting minutes and the special work session minutes for March 27, 2024. Motion to approve both items, anyone?
Motion to approve both.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right. Next, we have the community comment period of the agenda, which is your opportunity for anyone who's here in person to speak about a matter not onto tonight's agenda. Similarly, you have three minutes to do so. Please come forward to one of the podium, state your full name, address, and the light turns green when your time starts. When it turns amber, you have 30 seconds left, and when it's red, I ask you to wrap up. Anyone here for community comment that would like to speak? All right. We've had a kind of a string of people coming in for that, and this is the first time without it for a while. So all right, next, we'll move right on to our public hearing. So the first one is a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning and subdivision for 5120, 5124 Hankerson Avenue. Carrie Teague, our community development director, will present. And a little bit about this process. Public hearings give the chance for any resident who'd like to speak on this matter to do so. Staff provides a report to us, planning commissioners, based off of the development or applicant proposal. Staff will provide a presentation based off of that. Then it'll come back to us for questions, back and forth with city staff. Then we'll give the applicant a chance to present, have another back and forth, and then after that, we'll open it up for a public hearing, which went over already what that consists of. After that, it comes back to the planning commission. We'll deliberate, and we'll provide a recommendation for approval or denial of the request. And with that, Carrie, take it away.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, this property is located right on the edge of the Grandview District, just west of City Hall. So here is, well, here is Highway 100. Jerry's located right here. So the property is currently zoned single-family. Note, across the street is the Wells Fargo Bank that has a PCD II zoning district. Into the south, this purple area is a planned unit development. That was the Hankerson Townhomes that was approved 03 years or so ago. That's an eight-unit development. The site that we're looking at this evening is currently zoned low or guided in the comprehensive plan, low-density residential. Note that the property to the south, the townhomes, are guided medium density. So the proposal is to extend that medium-density residential area. Here's a look at the properties today. So it's the two single-family homes we're looking at. You can see the Hankerson Townhomes right here. The proposal is to tear these two homes down and build two two-unit townhomes that would be incorporated into that Hankerson Townhome Development to the south. Here's a look down the street. This is the Wells Fargo Bank across the street. The applicant did go through a sketch plan. This was the renderings that we looked at and the proposed, how it incorporates into the development. Not many changes, if at all, from the sketch plan. So this is a look at the two proposed units here on the right. Note that the proposed height here is 25 feet, a story and a half to step down to the single-family home. To the north here is a single-story building, so this would transition into that single-family district. Another rendering. So this would be the overall PUD if this were to be approved. So again, the eight townhome units to the south and then the two new structures to the north. They would be plating this area, so each unit would be located on its own lot. Lot's a little bit larger, as you can see, than the townhomes to the south. So what this request requires for a relatively small project, big asks here. Comprehensive plan amendment to re-guide that site from low-density residential to medium density. That allows density range between five to 12 units an acre. This is nine units an acre as proposed, just this part of the development. A rezoning from R1 to PUD 20, so it would be incorporated within that existing PUD to the south and then the subdivision. So as there is a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning, the city has complete discretion to approve or deny this request. So an argument can be made here, both for or against. So staff has provided the commission with alternatives for approval and denial. So primary issues are, is the comprehensive plan amendment reasonable and is the rezoning to PUD reasonable? Staff is supportive of this request. So again, for the comprehensive plan, it would be just extending that medium density to lots to the north, again, across the street from the mixed-use center, the Grandview District. So there are several goals and policies within the comprehensive plan that this would meet. Again, it's right on the edge of a commercial retail area. This would be seen as a transition into the single-family neighborhood. And the single-family characteristics that are described in the comprehensive plan, attached in multifamily housing should emulate single-family housing and its basic architectural elements with pitched roofs, articulated facades, visible entrances, porches, balconies. Taller buildings should step down to provide a height transition, and that's exactly what this project does. Parking to the rear. So if we go back to the site plan, I didn't note that there is an alley in the back, so all these units would take access off of the alley. And maintaining that community character. So the comp plan also talks about missing middle housing. So this townhome concept, two-unit, is a housing stock that the city is short on. So missing middle housing is a range of house-scale buildings with multiple units compatible in scale and form with detached, single-family homes located in a walkable neighborhood. This is, again, close to that commercial node. Let's see. I also wanted to note that within the transportation study that was done for Grandview and the Grandview Development Framework, there's talk of either a pedestrian or potentially a street connection at 52nd. So here's the site we're looking at to connect into that district. Doesn't exist today, but that's a potential for the future, and the added density, although small here, would support the retail uses in the district. We also believe that a PUD is reasonable here on this site. So again, PUD was established to the south, and it was found that that development met our, the purpose and intent of a PUD. This was deemed to be an appropriate setting as it transitions from the commercial area into the single-family neighborhood. It's an efficient approach to housing to get us that missing middle housing. The design is compatible with surrounding land uses. It's not going to have an impact on public streets and utilities. Again, it's a, provides a variety of housing types, and the transition is appropriate. So with that, again, staff has outlined alternatives for approval and denial, findings for both, but staff is recommending approval subject to the findings and conditions that are in the staff report. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Thanks for standing still for questions. Anyone? Questions, comments? Commissioner Padilla.
I didn't see anything on Better Together Edina. Was there any feedback from the community? That we got on Better Together Edina? I know they had a meeting, but...
Yeah, there were a few comments, not that many, but there were some opposed, didn't like the increase in density and the multifamily creeping into the neighborhood. But there were also some that were in support of the project as well.
Little bit of a historical question. Why did we go on the adjacent lot, the Hankerson property, with a PUD versus changing it to a other housing zoning?
Yeah, it's a good question. As we talked about in our work session earlier this evening, we don't really have a, this type of zoning that would fit this type of a development, especially the fourplexes to the south. So yeah, the thought was to put it into a PUD and write the regulations specific for that site. So because that PUD was already established, it made sense to just add to that rather than establishing another zoning district. R2, for example, would be the two-family zoning that may be appropriate just for these two sites.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. In some of the materials the developer provided, he talked about the alleyway in the back and driving and maybe concerns around, by the neighbors on cars speeding on that street. Is there anything that the city could do to look into that? Or what are your thoughts on preventing, you know, speed bumps, something that would mitigate any kind of speeding in that alleyway?
Yeah, that was noticed, mentioned in some of the feedback on Better Together as You know, it's very narrow, so just narrowing, having a narrow street generally slows traffic. Not that this is a street, but I don't know if speed bumps might be a way to slow traffic down. It might be something we could explore with our engineering department, if that would be something that's useful here.
Any other questions?
The applicant is, we have part of the applicant team here with us this evening, but the presenter, Steve Benke, is online, and he'll share his screen and do his presentation that way.
Okay. Welcome. All right. Turn it over to Steve. Thank you for coming here and providing this proposal.
Thank you very much, planning commission members. I'm sorry I'm not there. It's always been a joy to be with you, and I hope you can hear me right now if I could get a little feedback on that. I don't know that the computer is working properly.
We can hear you good.
Thank you very much. So you probably remember seeing the sketch plan, so I just wanted to kind of run through, you know, what we have elaborated on since then and a little bit about what we heard from the neighbors and some of the other aspects of this project. So again, the project is immediately adjacent to Grandview Townhomes. We feel that was a very successful project, you know, developed relatively quickly. Obviously, it sold up very, very quickly, and I guess when you, when you look at it. During the sales period for that building, and that would have been during, actually during COVID, the 2021, 2022 parade of homes, there was a significant amount of Edina residents who stopped in to see the project and specifically, you know, they liked the townhome idea, but they were really looking for more of a single-level type home, a rambler-type home. And when, when these two parcels came available to us, we saw an opportunity to fill that, that request, that need. And, you know, basically, the people we're talking to, their home, their housing needs have changed. They're looking for greater convenience, modestly less space or less space. You know, some of these people will probably be moving from significantly larger homes. They're definitely looking for one-level living. And most importantly, and that's really, I think, a good reason that this project works in this location is the proximity to community services. I think we're all aware of what Grandview as a, as an area brings to the community. We do believe that, you know, price points in the beginning in the 800s are affordable for Edina, and I need to clarify that. You know, a lot of these people are moving from homes that are significantly more expensive than that, and I think we need to remember that the real estate process, when somebody moves, especially within the city, it frees up other homes for new homeowners. And I think that that trickle-down is, is obvious, but it does free up less expensive homes for other people to move in. It isn't this home specifically or these homes specifically that are affordable, but they do open up other homes in the city for, you know, affordable homes for new residents. We note that the price point for these units is very similar to a number of homes on this block and the adjacent blocks. This is not a number that's out of, you know, that doesn't fit in with these blocks. We did have the neighborhood meeting. We did have approximately 12 family groups attend. Because of the requirement for 1,000 feet, there were 200 letters sent out, 199 letters sent out, and of that, 12 people chose to attend. Well, we did have a little bit of concern from two of the neighbors, and they were the immediate, immediate neighbors to us. What was related to us at the meeting generally was positive comments. They liked the existing project. They liked the idea of, you know, the transition into the neighborhood. They liked the idea of the buffering. That all has happened with Grandview first phase, and it also, I think it's, it's pretty obvious that it'll happen with this as well. We did note the same comment that Commissioner Smith mentioned about the alley. We don't feel that the speeding is really the purview of the project while the comments were that it could have been one of the residents of the other building who no longer lives there that could have been part of that problem. We're very happy to work with city engineering and police department to help with anything that we can do to try and dampen down that as a problem going forward. I'd like to point out that there was a couple of other issues during construction that developed, and we worked with planning staff and the environmental staff on, with those issues. And for the most part, they've been resolved. So I think we want to make a point that we do feel like we're, we're good neighbors during construction and that we create a neighborhood that is a good neighbor to the We do, we do see this as a completion of the Phase One project, only by virtue of it coming up, you know, down as a second, as a second phase. There is no contemplating any additional property. There's no, no one's coming knocking down our doors saying, hey, buy my parcel two, you know, we want to keep going. No, we see this as the end of the Grandview project. I wanted to point out that while the staff report talks about access from the alley, that is vehicular access, just as Grandview One has sidewalks and access from the street and enjoys street parking in season, of course. These homes also have front doors facing Hankerson and front porches, sidewalks that lead down to the street. We do believe that Brookside, as a neighborhood, is already medium density. While it may be guided and it may be zoned, single-family and low-density, the density of this, of the area is well over six, it's 6.68, I believe, units an acre, and that density is medium density. We do notice that there are other neighborhoods in Edina that also are medium density. I think if I could, I'm going to pop up a quick image here for you. So basically, this is a figure-ground relationship map. Grandview Square is in this area. Apartments here, apartments here.
We're not seeing anything, Steve, just to let you know.
Steve.
Okay, hang on a second. I'll try, I'll bring it over onto my other screen and see if this will take care of it for me. It asks to share my window. There we go. How's that?
Looks good.
Okay.
Appreciate it. I don't know what I'm looking at quite yet, but it looks like something.
Okay, now you see something, anyway. So 100 is here. Vernon, 50th and Vernon comes down through this area. Grandview is this right here. The black are the buildings. The gray are the roads. The white is ground, whether it be yards or driveways or trees or whatever. The blue, of course, is water. Basically, the point that I try to use with a figure-ground relationship is you can kind of see how the density changes. You can see how in Interlocken, we have very, very large lots. Across Interlocken from Brookside, we have smaller lots, but still less dense. When you look at Brookside as a neighborhood, you can see how dense these lots are. It's not, you know, basically, Edina is not a homogeneous city. It doesn't have one R1 zoning throughout. You do have clusters of neighborhoods that were built at different times, and those neighborhoods have different densities. This is, this is the reason that we believe that Brookside is already a medium-density neighborhood in a low-density comp plan and a R1 zoning. Inappropriate, but, or inaccurate, but perhaps it's just how the zoning was applied when the zoning code was established in 1964. Back then, we are, oops, I got a different page up here, so let me go back to my, there we go. We do feel that amending the PUD is the simplest rezoning at this point, mainly because all of the elements that we are meeting already exist within that document. While an R2 or PRD3 could also apply here, with the adjacent PUD, we do feel it's simpler from a staff standpoint, from a neighbor's standpoint, to simply extend the PUD across this property. We wanted to distinguish between townhomes and duplexes. While these are two-unit buildings, they are not a duplex. A duplex is a single building, a single home that is split for two families. These are true townhomes. They are no different than the adjacent parcel, and that's another reason why the PUD is, seems to be more appropriate. They have individual entrances, and they have complete separation between buildings. We do believe that we designed the project to mesh with the PUD 20, PUD that's adjacent. Let's see. We do believe also that these buildings are an appropriate transition from the original project into the single-family. We observe that missing middle comments encourage modest densification, which this fits the bill exactly. We believe that the density 8.95 is a modest upgrade from the existing 6.69, and it's an increase of one lot in, in this area. We do believe the PUD ordinance criteria are met, and the individual lots are a, another point of transition into the single-family, which also would enjoy individual lots. We do understand that the park dedication requirement, the additional park dedication due to the additional lots is certainly acceptable and an understood situation. We do believe townhomes of this type are a reasonable use here, and we do know that typically the town, the twin homes, the twin homes and duplexes and townhomes are all kind of interchangeable here, and all those words show up in the ordinances and the reports. I'm trying to use them specifically, but you'll find that I'm trying to use them interchangeably a little bit as well. But they do provide an excellent buffer for single-family, which this is. It also integrates multifamily well into this transitional area, transitional because of the mixed use at Grandview and into the single-family development beyond us. We concur with the planning report. We do believe that we meet the requirements for approval here. We concur with the engineering report. The requests of the engineering department are reasonable and consistent with what they provided us with Grandview and what was executed there. We concur with the report of the housing development manager, Stephanie Hawkinson, for the, for the redevelopment. Her report, we feel, discusses how this project fits into the character of Edina very well and how it actually helps benefit Edina. And we wish to request that the planning commission, you know, review and respect the staff's opinions in this matter. With that, I will stand, well, actually, I'm sitting, but I will stand for questions from you, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Thanks a lot, Steve. Yeah, you probably didn't know, but we had a work session before this, and the city's undergoing a zoning audit, so a lot of your history and kind of commentary was basically just talked about before. I'm sure you were just listening and taking notes, but anyways, appreciate the good presentation and welcome other commissioners for any questions that you may have for Steve. Okay, yeah.
Hi, Steve. Thank you again for your presentation. I know in sort of common parlance, duplex, townhomes, twin homes are interchangeable, but you did note, I think distinctly, that there is some distinction between a duplex and a townhome? And I just wondered if you could clarify that.
Sure. A duplex is a single building that is meant for two families. The separation requirements between those two dwelling units is a single one-hour wall. Townhomes... Townhomes are typically created on individual lots, and each unit, while appearing attached, actually is a standalone house. They have their own party wall at the property line. So the property, if you're looking through the property line area, you actually have two individual one-hour separation walls, so that each unit is separate, totally separate from the adjacent. That's the distinction between duplexes and any townhome. In this case, we're presenting a two-unit townhome, and that is why I wanted to make that pretty clear.
Thank you.
Commissioner Elker, thanks.
Thanks for the presentation. I wonder if you could just say a few more words about why you didn't just build a third building that looks like the other two that are just to the south of it? It seems like you're trying to put together a different, like, single-level living, and so it's a different outcome, I see. But were there other reasons of just the way that site works for the kind of building you're proposing?
I think the biggest reason was the transition to single family. You know, while while we had Grade helping us in the first project, basically, the north building of the fourplexes is lower than the adjacent single-family home, 5124 Hankerson. That gave us a height advantage between the height of the original building and that lot. As we continue up the road, we are basically leveling out, flattening out. Hankerson itself has come uphill and is now starting to flatten out. We do see that the ramp, the Rambler-style units are better transitioned. Then also, we also had the considerable feedback. I mean, and honestly, we get this in many, many municipalities, but the considerable feedback from Edina residents looking for a one-level living type of a type of a unit, type of a home. The previous development was narrower, and the units are were didn't have the ability to incorporate a single, a main-floor bedroom, let alone a master bedroom or a bedroom suite on the main floor. So we've kind of stepped back and looked at what would allow us to, you know, create a viable product within that framework for those potential clients.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll save comments. Nice work. Save comments for our deliberation period after the public hearing, but thank you for the, oh, you got, Commissioner Bornstein, you got it, all right.
So do you mind just, one of the kind of cri- not criteria, factors to consider here is the affordability of the housing. You know, there was an affordable housing report. It's one of the criteria that can weigh weigh on whether rezoning to PUD makes sense. You mentioned that you thought these would be affordable for Edina. Do you mind elaborating? I mean, I was actually just a little struck by the $800,000-plus price tag for a 1,400-square-foot unit. But like, what about these seem affordable or seem affordable to you from from the perspective of Edina?
Sure. Let me let me give you a little bit of background here on how affordability works these days, because I think we can all agree that there isn't a lot of entry-level homes being built anywhere. Entry-level, meaning, you know, 200, 300,000. Typical entry-level homes anywhere in the metro are usually starting in the 300s, if not mid to high 300s, if not 400,000. Land costs, material costs, labor costs have all gone up since, you know, even when we started the other project before that. COVID did a number on the industry and continues to. Beyond that, the land costs are a big factor in pricing. When we buy a property in Edina, we are buying it, we have to develop it. It's not a ready, it's not ready to build. We may need to remove a structure. We may need to correct soils. We may, we will need to update utilities. City of Edina Engineering requires us to update the sewer and replace a water line. Generally, the city is looking ahead and is trying to provide connections to the utilities in the city of Edina that's appropriate for a new home. Nothing wrong with that, but it does cost money. We also have a cost involved in meeting runoff requirements, stormwater management, those kinds of things. A lot of that was not done when these original buildings were built. So we are now having to come in and we are creating retention areas. In this case, they're hidden, they're under the front yard, they're underground. We did the same thing on the adjacent property. But we are helping to manage the runoff for our our piece here going forward with the city of Edina. That has a cost as well. Just so you got a handle on some of this, between the sewer improvements, water improvements, and the retention area for Grand View Phase One, we spent more than $250,000 for eight units. Buy that out, and it's, you know, there's that's, there's a cost there that is directly applied to the land side of each of those units. Beyond that, of course, like I sort of animated, you also have the, you know, materials and labor costs have all gone up. Nothing seems to be going down these days. Affordability in Edina, I'm using it relative to the observation that Stephanie made. If if these two homes did not exist in this area, they could, you know, where we have, where we're looking to make a project out of it, they could be torn down, and it happens on many other lots in Edina, and replaced with a home in, you know, generally 1.2, 1.5, 1.8 million-dollar range. Compared to that, 800,000 is affordable, in my eyes. And I think if you, you know, if you take the extension of the movement of Edina residents from their existing homes to these, that you do end up seeing the freeing up of fully affordable homes elsewhere in the city. You know, if this person is moving from, you know, from Concord or, you know, some of those areas over on the other side of Edina, for example, there are homes over there that they could be moving out of, that are definitely more affordable. And that whole process of that movement is, to me, what helps create, you know, that affordability.
You can introduce yourself. I know you're part of the applicant team.
Paul Donae, Donae Home. Steve, I think they wanted to clarify the 1,400.
38 square feet on the main floor. Commissioner Will Bornstein. That's just the first-floor square footage. So the opening, the beginning price would be less than 300 if they only take the first floor finished. The lower level adds another 1,149 square feet, for a total of 2,587. So that that entry level, just finishing the main floor, we could have a much more, if you want to call it, affordable price. Yeah, modestly. And these are all, I was the president of the last HOA there, and some of the residents that bought for me. Well, I'm the president until we get 75% occupancy of owner occupied, and then I turn it over to them. So this will be included in with that HOA for snow plowing, lawn care, and things that this age group is looking for, and they want to get out of their single-family homes that they've been taking care of. And living in Edina, like I do, a lot of my neighbors are looking at these, and they don't want that maintenance anymore. So I didn't want to interrupt you, Steve, but I thought I should add that to.
No, that's helpful. I appreciate the context, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much, Paul. I agree.
Okay.
The issue of the basement additional square footage I did miss. Thank you.
Sorry, you said this would be part of an HOA, right?
Pardon me?
This this development would be part of an HOA?
Yes.
Okay. Do you mind me asking what what the HOA fee is per month?
$390.
Yeah, just curious.
What is it?
$450.
$450, they, yeah.
$450.
I have another one that I'm president of. That one's $390. This one is is $450.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you guys for the presentation. Stick around, obviously. We will open this up to a public hearing now, and we'll do so, I'll, we'll get, I get, give people a chance who are tuning in remotely to jump into the virtual queue again. If you've been there already waiting, thank you. If not, there's quite a bit of instruction, so pay attention. Call the following number, yeah, it's on the screen, 312-535-8110. Then enter the access code 2633-1390260. Then we have a password of 5454. And press star three to indicate an interest in speaking. So hopefully you got all that. It's a lot. Meanwhile, we will open it to people who are here in person that would like to testify. Please come up to podium. You got three minutes, state your full name, address, and let you know when your time's up. Thank you.
Hello, thank you. My name is Ryan Beckman. I live at 5146 Hankerson, one of the previous townhomes. I felt compelled to say for transparency as a board member of the existing HOA, our board has decided not to initially include this development in our existing HOA, to what Paul just said. We are not taking them on immediately. And then also, we have had 10 individual owners throughout our history in these eight units, in personal conversations with eight of those 10 homeowners, none of them were previous Edina residents. So these are not necessarily opening up Edina homes by the new people that move in, just anecdotally, from what we've had in our existing building. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, yep, welcome. Full name, address, and.
Is there a reference for that?
Yeah, if, yeah, staff can help you. There should be a logo right there in the center of the table. Filming filming a screen is, you know, has variable results, so.
Hi, I'm Beth Johnson. I live at 5112 Bedford, and this is my first time at a planning commission or any council meeting, so obviously still trying to understand the technology. But the re, but first of all, I do want to say thank you for your service to the city. I know that being a member of the planning commission is not an easy job, but I think the reason that I felt compelled to come here tonight was really just because, I guess, 10 years, or about 10 years ago now, I was able to buy my first house in Edina in this neighborhood, and I feel like this project's taken away that ability for others, too. And then also, on top of that, I have concerns about the, I guess, incremental unplanned foredevelopment that's continuing. And like, I understand that the applicant mentioned, well, this is the last project on Hankerson. How do we know that, and what sort of dangerous precedent does this set? And then I think, third of all, like, when I was trying to wrap my head around this, and I read some of the the reports around the the development, I felt very concerned about the transparency, or I guess, or I guess, key omissions of critical information that I think is important for you guys to be able to make your recommendation appropriately. And so that, if you'll let me, I do want to go through a couple things that at least were concerns of mine in terms of how this aligns with the code and also the comprehensive plan. And so I'll start with just, I mean, obviously, this is a direct excerpt from the code in terms of the applicability or criteria that's important, or that is is used for rezoning to to PUD. And I'll walk through each of these. I think one of the first key distinctions I do want to make is that, and this is for this first bullet point here around uses, I know that the applicant did mention, he already thinks that it's, this is medium-density residential housing, but as as it shows here is from this excerpt from the code, or excuse me, from the comprehensive plan, land in cities is first categorized by how it's used and secondarily by the scale and intensity of that use. And so when I look at this, this is currently obviously guided as as low-density residential. And when I look at the uses of it, single-family residential neighborhoods, that's exactly it, like, medium density, according to the use in the the plan, is applies to attached housing. That's not what most of this neighborhood is. So I just wanted to make that key distinction first. And then in terms of, when I do look at, I guess, this first criteria in terms of eligibility is around, you know, whether the proposed site is designated for more than one use, which we all know is not applicable here, it's just single use. But but that will be important in my last point, so just remember that. Secondly, here, in terms of the, in terms of four-single-use land types, it has to be consistent with the with the comprehensive plan. And when I look at the comprehensive plan, this is where I really had a hard time wrapping my head around it, because when I look at this, comprehensive plan says, you know, zero units of medium-density housing is is needed. And then when I look at also some of these existing or projected housing needs, it looks like housing for families with childrens and first-time homebuyers, smaller housing types, and as well as, and then also, I highlight here in terms of, you know, while housing in Edina is obviously is.
Yeah, just trying to ramp up.
Okay. So, okay. But I think, and I can send you this if it would be helpful for your consideration, but I think the key, or like, one of the key things to mention here, though, and I think is also even important for how the the last development even got approved, is when I look at this last criteria here, in terms of setback regulations, building coverage, and floor area of the most closely conventional zoning district is considered presumably appropriate, but may be departed from to accomplish the purpose and intent of subsection B1. And subsection B1, as I show here, applies to sites that are designated for more than one use. So I think one of the key questions and key things that I would ask you guys to consider is whether those setback building coverage and far ratios can be departed from, since there's only one land use. And then finally, this shows that it, this does not meet any of the setback requirements of any of the conventional zoning districts, along with the building coverage requirements.
Thank you very much. Sorry to cut you off. You prepared a lot, but we just give three minutes to each person. So thank you so much for coming in. Yeah, please come forward. Got three minutes, full name, address.
No, it won't be that long. My name's Jim Polley. I live at 5148 Hankerson. I'm also in that new Grand View building that's been built. I am the president of that association. I think it's gone rather seamlessly, the transition of all of us folks that live there. I'm getting the appearance from some of the comments that people are saying that they seem to be concerned about the type of person that might be living in these homes, and whether they can afford them, and whether there's families that might possibly live in there. And I can tell you, there's some diversity of the people that do live in our place. I'm a retired guy. Ryan and his wife work two doors down from him, is a family with two children. So there's a variety of different people that do live in those buildings. I also wanted to briefly mention the concerns about traffic in the back of the alley there. I drive down that alley every day at different times of the day, morning, noon, and night. And I think probably 90% of the times that I go down that alley, I'm the only car in that alley. So I don't see that there's a traffic problem or a speeding problem either. But if you did want to put in speed bumps or something like that, I think that that might be a nice suggestion that would slow down things going through the alleyway there. I approve of the project. I think Donae is a very good builder. They're local, they're from Edina. They're not a national builder, and they build respectful, good-quality. and they build respectful, good-quality homes for residential people to be able to move in of all different types of people. So, and my comment was on the Better Edina website as well. Okay?
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming here. Anyone else who's here in person that would like to testify, please come forward. Bueller? Okay. We'll move to the virtual queue. I know we've given it almost ten minutes for someone to be ready to speak. Is there anyone in the waiting room?
No, there is nobody in the waiting room.
Well, we've given it plenty of time for someone to jump in. I guess I'd offer up if anyone wants a motion to close a public hearing.
Make a motion to close a public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed, so now we'll take it back to the planning commission. Thank you for all your comments, both on Better Together as well as in person, and staff and the presenters for sharing your feedback. I guess we could just go down the row, or if someone has comments they'd like to share right away? Open it up. Yeah, Commissioner Day.
Okay. So I guess, looking at this project, there's, to me, there's a lot of pros and cons associated with it. So, you know, there's, we've gone over the pros. I think our residents helped cover the cons, but in fact, I'll recap at least from my perspective. So with this project, obviously, we'd see increased density. You know, we talked about the missing middle, the need to increase the variety of housing. I think this project is in a good location for that type of development. You know, so, you know, the letter from Stephanie pointed out, right, you know, fits in with terms of like getting more housing stock, increasing the variety, et cetera, right? So that's, that's all, I think, very good. From a con perspective, right, that also pointed out in that same letter from Stephanie was that we are tearing down two moderately-priced affordable homes in Edina in order to replace them with, you know, much more expensive housing stock, though it would be subdivided. And when I think about the loss of that, those affordable moderately-sized houses, to me, it actually, you know, I started the comments because it hits home personally as my, I've been a resident of Edina for almost three years now. And when I moved into Edina, I moved into basically a house very much like the two that are existing on this plot of land today. My house was built in nineteen fifty-seven. These houses were built in the fifties. I did see a note and hear from the applicant about how much maintenance houses from the fifties require. I can personally attest to that. It's a lot. But it was, you know, basically the price level that my wife and I could afford moving into the city for the first time. I can speak for a lot of my peers and say that this, basically, these types of houses right now are in high demand, just as we have much in high demand, right, this middle, missing middle for seniors, this variety of housing, right? So there's a lot of demand, obviously, from the community for this type of housing, but there's a lot of demand from the community for the housing stock that exists on this plot of land today. You know, another old friend of mine bought a house because he could, what he could afford, was built in nineteen thirty-seven. You know, three hundred thousand dollar house. His plot of land could maybe have been, similar thing could have happened here. You know, he drills into the walls, then there's newspaper for insulation. But again, that's what we, that's what some people can afford in order to move into Edina for the first time. And, you know, also, so I'm going to go on, I'm going to keep doing anecdotal things here for a minute, so pardon my, pardon me. But the first time that I went to an open streets meeting in Edina and talked to the mayor and residents, the question I asked the mayor is, I said, how, is there a way that we can prevent developers coming into Edina and taking single-family moderately-priced houses like the one I just purchased and tearing them down in order to build much more expensive housing? Right? And it was kind of a, it depends, right? We have programs in Edina to try to maintain housing stock. The city can buy houses, I believe, and try to make them available to new families and whatnot in order to prevent this type of scenario from happening. But it's on the top of mind for a lot of people my age, right? There's much, there's huge competition for these types of houses. Even though they require a lot of maintenance, a lot of us are learning how to do that. And again, I attest to it, it does require quite a bit of work. But this is, I mean, they are great homes. Like, my house, yes, it required some updates to the carpet, insulation, et cetera, but I love my house. So, you know, coming back to my, my gold hand, like I said, there's a lot of pros and cons here. So I'm really kind of torn in terms of the loss of the moderately, you know, moderately-sized, moderately-priced houses with these pros that we see with increased density, missing middle. So what it really comes down to is the ask and the lift for the comprehensive plan amendment and change. And, you know, I'm certainly curious to hear what the other commissioners have to say about this. But, you know, as we talked about PUD use, I know we are trying, trying to get, rely on it less, should I say. And as our resident that came up and spoke pointed out, right, we try to use PUD. It was originally intended for something that has more than one principal, land use, mixed use, not really just little tiny, tiny, single lot sizes that we want to just be able to do whatever we want that don't meet the existing zoning requirements. We don't meet setback requirements that, you know, apply for any of the current residential units, et cetera. So to me, this is a big ask, and so I struggle. I think, I think it's right now it's a big ask, but I'm willing to hear more from my fellow commissioners. And again, wanted to provide that personal perspective as we let off this discussion.
Thanks a lot. Commissioner Honneman.
Thanks. I guess I look at what the developer has done here as a phenomenal gift to us because it is an affordable property, absolutely. I bought into Edina fourteen years ago, but the, in a house very similar to this. But the economy has changed. The world has changed, and we can only control or impact so much of that. This house could go on the market tomorrow. It could be torn down and put a one-point-two-million-dollar home. And there would be nothing that we could do to stop that. But we have the opportunity to take these two homes that could be flipped and turn them into these duplexes. As I work in senior living, I can't even tell you what the demand is for single-level living, for accessible living. And land prices make it very challenging to take the square footage to do that. So I'm very excited that we're able to take these two properties that could be something even less affordable. Eight hundred thousand dollars is not great in terms of my definition of affordability, but it is within the scope of what we see in the city. And I think it's fabulous, and I'm excited that we have the option to create in this location more density and single-family, or single-level living, so.
Thank you very much. Maybe just stick to the side. Commissioner Felton?
Sure. I I feel like I'm in the same place I was last September when you came forward with this. I completely understand, right, the right that you can, the owners of these homes can tear them down and build a much larger house. I think it'd be more like one-point-six, one-point-eight than one-point-two to make all the costs work out because the cost of the land is significant, and they've got to build on top of that. You know, so having four houses instead of two, it helps with our housing needs. I think it's a housing type that's necessary. We do have the Grand View Area Plan, just extending that Grand View Area Plan. A little bit makes sense. You know, we're talking about areas of potential change, and this is one of them which we're talking about. But once again, it's like, we're talking about changing our one zoning. And I understand the fear about coming in and changing our one zoning. You know, there's a lot, there's a lot of talk right now about about how we can deal with our housing issues. But I think there's also a lot of fear about about people losing their, their single-family housing, so I'm torn on this one.
Commissioner Bornstein, thank you.
Not to repeat what others have said, there's, yeah, there's some tension in this one for me, too. I think, just remember, there's two different asks. There's amending the comprehensive plan and separately rezoning the parcels. And I, it's important to think about whether both of those asks make sense. Like you both, like I think like everybody said, I think allowing greater density in this area may make sense in general, just because of its proximity to other types of land uses. Whether amending the plan to just guide this one small spot to that makes sense is sort of a more open question. I think the thing I struggle with more on this one is the request, sorry, the request to rezone this to PUD, including because we've talked about trying to dial back the use of PUD. And because this doesn't really strike me as the type of... Like, when I read through the criteria for what are the criteria for a PUD, this doesn't seem to fit that to me. So like, for example, when I was looking through the criteria in the staff report, I was kind of just asking myself like, yes or no, are these criteria met? Do we need to rezone to PUD to bring this development in line with the comp plan? We don't need to because it's currently in line with the comp plan. If we changed the comp plan, then there'd be a tension. But anyway, so that's not really met here. Does rezoning to PUD promote creativity and efficiency in land use? Maybe a little bit here. I think, I think the applicant spoke to that somewhat, although not to the degree that we usually see when we talk about PUDs and the type of creativity and efficiency that we're bringing to unique sites when we, when we've used that in other contexts. Does it allow for improved site design, like better design elements, pedestrian connections? I don't think, not really. I think this is too small to really make meaningful changes in that regard. Are we, do we need to rezone to PUD to ensure high-quality design? I don't think so. Does it improve street efficiencies? I don't, not really. Preserve site characteristics, like natural characteristics? I think these are just flat pieces of land, so maybe not. Not like we've seen with other projects where there's something really unique about the site that we're trying to preserve. Does it allow for mixing of land uses? No. You know, encourage affordable housing? We talked about that not being true. I think the people that move into this are probably going to be selling more expensive homes and freeing up more expensive units elsewhere in the metro. And then does it facilitate transitions? You know, I think we've already talked about that. So just on the P, the PUD piece is the piece that I'm struggling with. Because it just doesn't seem like this is the type of situation where we'd rezone to PUD, even though I'm super supportive of high-quality projects like this would be, and greater density in these types of areas.
Thank you. Looking this way. Commissioner Elkier?
Just in the follow-up to Commissioner Bornstein's point, I have a question for Kerry, if I could. So what would be an option to PUD if, as a hypothetical, one like the project but not the zoning change?
The option would be to rezone to R2, which allows two-family dwelling units. There would be variances for setback, for lot size, for both lots. Well, really, yeah, both lots. You need at least fifteen thousand square foot feet for a, to put a duplex on. Both of these are just under ten thousand square feet. So it would be a different zoning category with several variances, include, could be lot coverage as well. Part of staff's recommendation here is because we've already established a PUD to the south, if this were included as part of that original development, it seemed to fit. And to create another zoning district in the middle of the block, it just seemed to make more sense to just add to the existing PUD.
And we didn't do R2 for the prior project. Why?
Correct. Those were four-unit buildings, so that wouldn't have been allowed, right?
Okay, thank you.
Previously, before these were built, there was a five-unit apartment on the site. So, just...
None yet, no comments? Just, Stu, yeah? Commissioner Morata? Yeah, you do. Smile.
So... I mean, as for, you know, so there was talk about among commissioners, among, about revising the comp plan versus revising the zoning. And my understanding is that we have to revise the comp plan if we do the zoning. So they go hand in hand because the comp plan is the, is the pattern and the zoning is the implementation. So you'd have to have both. I am, well, let me cover something else. So we had a work session before this meeting, and we talked about some of the limitations that we have within our zoning code. And, you know, we're trying to fix that. We're in the process of trying to fix that, so we're working with consultants to do that. And it's something the city council wants, and so, but we don't have those tools today. And so the only real tool we have is a PUD. So, and I think pretty much everybody agrees that PUD is not something that we want to use all the time and certainly not going forward as a, as a planning and zoning tool. But it's all we have today, and this proposal is here before us today, not, not ten years from now. So I'm pretty much okay with it in the sense that, you know, it's kind of our main tool at this point because the city council historically has wanted to use PUD to control each property very distinctly. Secondly, the property next to it, made by the same developer just a couple of years ago, is also a PUD. And, you know, you don't want, you know, one thing you want to avoid with zoning and planning is to have spot zoning, right? So, and that's part of the reason why you have a comprehensive plan, because you want to lay out contiguous areas. And what we're doing here is extending an area so it is contiguous, and so that makes a lot of sense to me. So, you know, if this were, you know, two blocks away, I think it would be a terrible idea. You know, I don't think we want to just, you know, willy-nilly change zoning within our city. That's not really what zoning is about, and it's not what comprehensive planning is about. But when you're extending an area, you know, to lots that's contiguous with the existing one, in an area that, you know, as Commissioner Felton said, is, you know, at the edge of an existing small area, planned guided area, that's, you know, planned for more density, and it's adjacent to a county road. I mean, this is a place where there's transit. I mean, if you're going to add density, this is the area where you want to add it, right? You don't want to go into the middle of some single-family-zoned neighborhood, like Parkwood Knowles, for example, and like stick, you know, duplexes or towers or whatever there, right? That doesn't make sense. But here, you're just extending literally by two lots, something, and as Kerry said, you know, there was a five-unit apartment building adjacent to it. So it's all very methodical. It's all very logical. We have a housing problem in our city. We have a housing problem in our region. We have a housing problem in our country. If you, so, I don't know why, and I love our affordable housing director, but I don't know why we bring up the topic of affordable housing in terms of single-family homes. Because when people talk about affordable housing, they're not talking about single-family homes, right? You're not saving anything or making anything affordable by saving an old house on a large piece of, relatively large piece of property where you could build more density. That's not affordable housing. That's not the goal of what you're trying to do with affordable housing. So if you keep that as single-family homes, for example, I mean, that's fine in a region that's not growing, right? So if Edina were stagnant, I mean, you know, we could say, oh, well, we're not getting more owners. We just need to make the housing that we have affordable for the people who live here. Then maybe I could see that, but we're growing, and the region is growing, and we have this huge need for housing. And so what hap- And so what happens if we don't build it here? Then two of those families that would move in have to move further out, meaning they have to drive further in. So whatever neighborhoods they're passing on the way in, they're adding to congestion to those neighborhoods. So they're actually making it, by, by not increasing the density, you're making housing worse, you're making transportation worse, you're making climate change worse, you're making equity worse, you're making everything worse by leaving things the way they are. It sounds comfortable to keep things the way they are, but we live a world where we have 10 consecutive months of record temperatures. We have to do things differently now than we've done them in the past. And, you know, again, you know, nobody's advocating for putting a five story tower right here, right? We're like literally just doubling the size of these properties. The housing physically is no taller than the, than the adjacent housing. So for all these reasons, I think this seems very, very appropriate. And, and I know change is scary and I don't, you know, nobody likes change, especially as we get older or whatever, right? But, but some change we have to do in order to save, you know, our planet and our community for the people who are going to move here in the future, for the, the children and the grandchildren or people who move in from other neighborhoods or other cities. We need to provide more housing and I think this is a very, very gentle way. There, there's one architect who calls missing middle housing gentle density. Because you're just, you're just barely increasing the density, right? You're not putting, you know, I mean, there was a proposal at one point in Grandview to have an 11 story tower, right? And that would be like totally inappropriate, even in, even in the densest part of that neighborhood. But when you're adding one unit of housing to a piece of property, you know, it's not really going to materially affect anything. I mean, I don't know, with the, with the, with those horrible people who have moved into the neighborhood. I mean, has anything really changed in the neighborhood? You know, it, it doesn't seem like it has. So for all these reasons, I think this seems like a very reasonable proposal and it matches our comprehensive plan. And it, this is the best zoning tool we have, I believe, to do this.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Padilla, good luck.
With all due respect. So as I said in September, when you were here last, I thought that this request was heavy lift from a comprehensive plan point of view. And I, I consider the same for rezoning as well. The PUD rezoning intent, as Commissioner Bornstein mentioned, is to promote a more creative and efficient approach to land use. I do not think that that is what's being fulfilled here. You talked about the missing middle and the fact that these are going to cost in the 800,000s, which I'm assuming is probably the upper 800,000s by the time we get around to all the expenses that you alluded to. I think in terms of design, it might satisfy the missing middle, but not in terms of price. The median home value in Edina in 2023, which would be the tax value in 2024, is $696,600. So if you're coming in at close to $200,000 above that for a single unit, I don't see that as satisfying the missing middle at all. The median home price in Eden Prairie is 536,400 and St. Louis Park, it's 373,000. So I'm not seeing price wise, missing middle being addressed. The assumption you're making about this being built for Edina residents, I think, is a misguided assumption, as Ryan testified. I think that you're, you're doing a little bit of talking out of both sides because on the one hand, there are so many things that you mentioned that are good about this design, this building, this location. And I agree, it's in a great neighborhood. I spent a lot of time walking the whole neighborhood the other day and there's, there's so much there. There's so much to take advantage of. That I think it begs the question, why not build more? And again, I think that, that clashes with the, with the comprehensive plan amendment. I think if there's so much to be done there and this is such a vital neighborhood full of potential and full of offerings, then there could be more done here if we're going to the trouble of doing these kind of rezoning and an amendment. So at the end of the day, I do not think a PUD or rezoning is, is reasonable, nor do I think a comprehensive plan is, amendment is reasonable. And I think this project completely lacks imagination in terms of what this city needs and what can be done in terms of all of our housing needs.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
All right. I think this is a tough one, definitely for the reasons that I've heard here so far. I do agree with Commissioner Miranda's point of view that, you know, this seems to fit this area. If I were to think about what's a higher density type development in this specific area, this would seem to fit that nicely. I appreciate staff's recommendations, what they shared and how they approached it and the different zoning tools that they looked at and which one was the most effective one. I think that makes sense. The two concerns, of course, is, you know, just the price. I think the price is, is significant. But if I step away from that and think about the alternative, the alternative would be a more expensive, taut rebuild, which is happening everywhere. And that is, that is absolutely pricing people out of their city. At least this one you have, you have a shot. So I see it from that perspective. From price and, and agree with the points regarding affordability. This is not so much about affordability per se, it's more of how do we create housing opportunity that, that's not the 1.2, but something that we know we can't find in $400,000 homes anymore. Now, the question on zoning is, is where I think the sticky point is. And, you know, amending the comprehensive plan and, and rezoning, that definitely, we've used PUD quite a bit for big projects and not so much for these smaller projects. And we certainly want to get away from doing that. And so we're, as a city, looking forward to how do we upgrade our zoning to match the comprehensive plan? And we're actively working with consultants and teams to get there. And so I know that's going to be addressed in the future. And however, the tools that we have now, PUD is what we, what we have. And, and this opportunity, I think, is a decent opportunity. We're extending a PUD that's already here. It's a transition. Everything, again, in the staff report seems to make sense. So unless I hear something differently, I'm, I'm falling on the side of approval on this one. Because I think it, it makes sense with the knowledge that we would be upgrading our, our zoning to match comprehensive plans in the future. But for right now, this opportunity seems like it fits this, this area well from a location, proximity, transition, density, all these key components. So I'm kind of leaning positive on this one unless something jumps out at me that says, no.
Don't worry, I won't jump out of my chair at you. Commissioner Elkhair. Thanks, Quincy.
This is a lot harder than I thought it would be this afternoon because when I was going through the materials last night and this afternoon, it seemed pretty easy to me. But it's one of the reasons I really appreciate getting together and having the discussion and hearing other commissioners' thoughts is because there were a couple, several things that I hadn't, I hadn't really probably considered enough. But I would, I think I'd be a happier person if we didn't need a comprehensive plan and a rezoning and, and all of the requirements to get this project done. And I think in the spirit of our conversation from the work session, it would be nice if we had zoning that better reflected what we're really trying to achieve in the city, but we don't. In a sense, this project doesn't fit the comprehensive plan, but in important ways it does. It promotes diversity in our housing stock. It increases the quantity in our housing stock with gentle density. It allows aging in place in the, in the product that the developer, the applicant is planning to build, which is rare and important in our city. It also has some features that we have tended to like as a planning commission, like garages in the back instead of the front. It's a pleasant looking building from the street, so I think it'll add to the visual appeal of that area. And overall, for me, I'm interested in supporting the project and doing what we need to do to get it done. I really liked what Commissioner Felton said about R1 zoning and how we need to be cautious with that. That's not the words you used, but that's a sentiment. And I think you're completely right about that. We need to be very cautious and purposeful in how we, whenever we consider going from R1 to anything else. But I think we've done a good job tonight considering that. And we only would want to do that if there's a good reason that accomplishes something important for our city. I think this, I think this fits that. So I'm, I'm, I want to support this. The only other thing I want to say, and it's not a, not a message for the applicant so much as for the city and for us, is if we want to talk about this area on the other side of Vernon as close to commercial services, we need to remember that to get to those commercial services, you have to cross four lanes of busy traffic with not particularly great sidewalks. And even though a poor golfer like me could hit a nine iron from this proposed spot to the front door of Jerry's Grocery Store, to walk there is more than a quarter mile. To go down Vernon, to cross at Eden where there's a crosswalk, cross to the other side, walk back to the front door of Jerry's. It's 1600 feet. So I think it's a great location, but we have a long way to go to really make that accessible to the, to the commercial services that are literally a stone's throw away. So that's just a comment for us as we continue in, in that area. Oh, thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Day.
Just a couple of quick things to add as we've gone around the table. So I've heard it reiterated multiple times that somebody could tear these down and build much more expensive housing stock, but I will point out that very well could not happen as well. Keep, I feel like we've hammered on that a few times. There are a lot of people that would buy this lot and not tear it down. So to say that we're doing some greater good by making sure that somebody doesn't do that, I don't necessarily buy into that idea. The comment about the PUD zoning and expanding it by two lots, right? We've created the momentum here. I thought it was a bad, I think the previous decision was a bad one and that one bad decision doesn't necessitate another. Just because we've done it in the parcel next door, it doesn't mean that we have to do it here. I know that it fits, but we've created the situation for ourselves. And now, you know, as we dive into the, the PUD discussion, and it really came up as Commissioners Padilla and Bornstein pointed out, or as they, as they discussed this. If I think about the development that was proposed across the street, the office building that has not gone forward. But when that was, that was proposed to us several months ago, right? What were we getting from the PUD at that time? We were getting sustainable building materials, we were getting affordable housing, we were getting much greater density in that area. We're getting a park and we were potentially getting a restaurant on the bottom. Here, we're proposing a PUD simply because we want to build bigger than the setbacks require for an R2 district. Not quite the same give and take from a city standpoint of how, why we developed PUD in the first place. We, a lot of times we say we do PUDs for affordable housing. Of course, obviously, this isn't in any way, if we've discussed affordable. Yes, it's increasing density, but to, again, to me, it really doesn't meet, you know, we're, PUD should have some, a little bit, at least some discretion to it, right? We should be getting a little bit more than just breaking one unit in, one house into two similarly priced, you know, expensive, more up to date units, so.
Any other comments?
I can share a few that, if there's any that have been left unsaid. Great discussion. Commissioner Elkhair summed it up very well, hit in both sides, kind of, and maybe capturing where I ultimately fall. You know, one, there's a few points to think about when considering building any type of missing middle housing or even single family homes. To build something new in Edina is inherently not going to be affordable. I mean, most of the missing middle, if you build it, there is the cost of the land, I mean, they walk through it. So, I mean, just in general, to build anything new is going to be above the median price range for literally anything that we do, especially when you scale the density down. The closer you get to one home, it's going to be even more expensive. So the point of missing middle housing isn't necessarily to provide something more affordable right then. It's to provide that increase in variety of housing stock. So ultimately, you have that throughout your community and later. So, I mean, I picture if I walked down this neighborhood in 25 years, you know, and this was built and now it's 25 years old and you have the other townhomes there. It would feel like a very logical incremental, nice transition into the single family homes around it. And right at your front door across the street isn't other single family homes. It's a busy road and a bunch of commercial services. So this is a very distinct and unique lot and opportunity that's like on the fringe of a neighborhood. So I can see there's this tension of, do we keep it the same? Or do we allow for some of that transition? And I know when we, you know, approve the comprehensive, well, the comprehensive plan update, you know, it was like hands off the single family neighborhoods, it was focused on the small area plans. I think you have to look at this area as being pretty close and in consideration of that small area plan because it benefits from that small area directly, you can walk to it. So I think the tool by which we support this or deny it isn't as important to me because if this were not a comprehensive plan amendment, but was instead of rezoning with a bunch of variances, I think I'd still support it. And when the developer was here in September, they asked for that type of guidance from us, what they should do. They're thinking PUD because it made sense, staff kind of guided them toward it. And I think because there is that one right next to it and it can merge into it, that seems like the better tool to use. But in general, it is just a gentle bump in density and the scale, the quality of what they will build will be just a gentle bump in that experience in that neighborhood. I'm sympathetic to the comments about an increase in traffic in an alleyway that didn't have that before. So, I mean, maybe that is something the city could look at when we start adding density to alleys and, which does add vehicles and more traffic, although incrementally, maybe there are traffic calming measures that could be added, like a speed bump mid, mid block or something. I think maybe that's something the city could do beyond this and at least help assuage some of those concerns many neighbors shared about, you know, there's more cars, people are speeding through there and it didn't happen before. I don't know if that's true or not, but if it were, that, this would bring a lot of stress to add more people there. So if we could slow those people in the alleyway down, that'd be a great benefit. One other point I just wanted to make, because it was brought up in this meeting like it was the last and, and even the, the original Hankerson Townhomes, is the potential connection or crossing at 52nd. I, I just, I want to be on the record again saying I think a vehicular crossing there would be an absolutely horrible idea and shouldn't be a part of this discussion in any way. But to Commissioner Elkhair's point, that transportation plan was drafted almost 10 years ago? But there is short and medium term things that were expected to be done to get people more safely across that road that haven't been done. So hopefully this is another reminder to get, you know, some better protected crossings until the county gets their act together to, you know, give us some funding and get a better roadway version of Vernon. a better roadway version of Vernon that's planned. And if people aren't aware, it includes shrinking Vernon to one lane of traffic in both directions with bigger boulevards, protective bike lanes, and sidewalks. There is not a sidewalk in front of Jerry's on Vernon. It's crazy to think about. It's like a brick, one-foot pathway. So there's a lot of opportunity that the city has to respond to an increase in density like this, that I would expect the city to start acting if we're going to start accommodating this. But that's what I have for comments. Any others?
Sure.
Yeah, just to that last point, I know the engineering department has put together a proposal. They tried to get funding for it, but I don't think they got funding for it. But they were going to try to do just that. That was, I think they tried last year.
As like the Grand View Beautification Project, and instead they got the funding for the Diverging Diamond? Other story. On that note, anyone willing to make a vote, a motion or further discussion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Let's do a roll call vote, starting over at Commissioner Elkire.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Six-three.
Six-three. The motion to recommend approval has been approved. So this will go to the City Council.
Correct.
Which, what's the agenda, or what, what date is it?
It will be their first meeting in May.
Okay.
I don't have my calendar in front of me, but not the next one.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Good luck with the project, and hope the neighbors and everyone stays connected as this goes forward. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you bet. Oh, yeah, there you are, Steve. Thanks. All right, next public hearing. Wow, we're actually kind of close to our agenda time, which never happens. We're early. That's, that's not normal. I know. All right, let's go. So we got a site plan with variances and a subdivision request for Edina and Enodontics at 7,300 Metro Boulevard. We saw this in a version of a sketch plan more recently. Same process as the last one with, with this public hearing. Carrie will present. We'll ask some questions, turn over to the development team to present, followed by some questions, open it up to a public hearing, and then we'll close that public hearing and deliberate again. With that, Carrie, take it away. Thanks.
Testing. There we go. Okay, thank you, Chair members of the Commission. So this site is located in the Cahill Office and Industrial Area. The property is zoned planned office district. It is guided for office use in the comprehensive plan. Existing on the site today is about 110,000-square-foot office building, as you see in the picture here, and the proposal is to build a 6,000-square-foot dental office in the corner. They did go through sketch plan, as mentioned. The main topic of conversation, both at Planning Commission and City Council, was the parking in the front, and could they do anything to bring the building up and not have that parking in front where patients would have to cross that in order to get to the building? So they have done that. They've adjusted, they've moved the building up a little bit, have the parking along the side, so customers, patients can just access the sidewalk along the building. The main entrance is located right here. In doing that, they wanted to maintain the drive aisle, so in doing that, they've shifted the building 10 feet to the south, so they're asking for a 10-foot side yard setback variance right here in order to accommodate that shift toward the street, and then still maintaining that existing drive aisle pattern. So look at the building. You can see the entrance with the large glass and windows. Another view. So the request is a site plan review, a couple of variances, first for the first-floor ceiling height from 20 feet to 10 feet, and then that side yard setback, as mentioned. They're also proposing a subdivision in order to split this off to be sold as a separate parcel. So review of the site plan, again, it's code compliant with the, with those two exceptions. It meets the floor area ratio requirement, parking both as a combined use for the site and the dental office itself. Building materials would be, would be stone with the metal panels and the large windows. The plat itself, here is the subdivision to establish that new lot. With the subdivision, there is a park dedication required here. It's $4,900. Primary issue is, are the variances justified? In this case, staff believes that the variance criteria is met. The intent of that side yard setback is to provide adequate separation between buildings. So the closest building, yeah, this shows it. So the location of the, the new office building would be right here, and you see the closest building to the site is set quite a, quite a bit back from Metro Boulevard, and it's about 70 feet from that nearest lot line. So there's plenty of separation between the buildings, so staff believes that the variance is reasonable, and again, it's accommodating the shift of the building up to the street, so there's no parking in the middle. The uses are consistent with the comprehensive plan in regard to that 20-foot ceiling height. This is the one that we're working on the code amendment to have, isolate that regulation to the Southdale District, as was originally intended. There's no 20-foot ceilings within this area, so it would, with a single-story building, be somewhat out of place. There was a traffic and parking study concluded, and the conclusion is that there would be minimal impact to the roadways, and there is adequate parking. I believe Ed Terhar is with us, should there be any questions on that, on that, in regard to that, that study. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the site plan, the variances, and the subdivision, and I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Great succinct presentation. Anyone? Yeah, Commissioner Elkire.
This is more of a clarification, but I just wanted to confirm, on one of the pictures, you were talking about how the side yard setback on that line is 70 feet from the nearest building?
Eee, let's see.
It was the south side.
Yes, the, the south side.
Where the, where it's going from 20 feet to 10 feet side yard setback, right?
Yeah, the setback is 10 feet, but the separation between the two buildings would be 70 feet.
And it appeared that the part of the adjacent lot that it is being, that it is encroaching is yet another surface parking lot, so it's...
Correct. Yeah.
Wouldn't, doesn't seem like a big crisis.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, thanks, Director Teague. If you could go to the image where you showed just the rendering of the front of the building, I think you passed it. Yep, this one. So let me see that the height is 20 feet. I can see that there's two different heights, right? There's the height of the glass entryway area and then the rest of the building. I'm assuming that the 10 feet is really the rest of the building, but this entryway area would be maybe like 15 feet. Could you just talk more about how we determine height in this scenario?
Correct. Yeah, the height variance is for the lower portion. I don't know the, I'm sure the applicant knows the exact height of that, but it's in that 15 to, probably in that 15 range.
Yeah, I'm Chris Whitehouse. I'm the architect with DJR Architecture. That portion in there would actually be 20 feet or slightly more on the high. It's also pitched a little bit for drainage, so that part, it was kind of, we're trying to work with the recommendation, and it's just pleasant to have a large, you know, a large space when you first walk in. That'd be the waiting area in the entryway. But yes, the rest of the building is what we're talking about for the variance on that portion.
Thank you.
They do have a materials board, if any, if the, if the Commission is interested in seeing that. One thing I, I didn't mention in the presentation, the, the city's pedestrian plan does call for a sidewalk here, but in speaking with engineering, when this roadway is improved in the, in the future, there's adequate room within that right-of-way to still have a boulevard-style sidewalk and provide the sidewalk by narrowing the road. There's, the right-of-way is quite large here, so they didn't feel it necessary to get any easements at this time, that that can all be accomplished within the right-of-way.
Any other questions or follow-up? Yeah, Commissioner Honeman.
Can you talk to me about the landscaping? I was just confused reading the note about, it's a parking lot currently, right?
It is, correct.
So when we talk about the number of overstory trees, it's before the lot is subdivided?
Yeah, we look at the site as a whole, so I'm not sure if I have a graphic that shows all of the trees, but we, we add up all of the trees on the site, including the ones they're proposing here. And so based, in the, the number of trees that's required is based on the perimeter of the entire site, one tree per every 40 feet. So with this one, based on that perimeter, 48 overstory trees are required, and existing and proposed, there would be 58 on the site, so it's in compliance with our landscape regulations.
So how does that work now that this would be a, if it was approved, would be a standalone parcel? Does the trees within that parcel comply, or how does that get thought about?
Yeah, we look at it as a tract. You know, it's the, it's the same zoning district, so for purposes of calculating trees, floor area ratio, parking requirements, we look at the site as a whole. So should trees die in the future on this site, they'd be required to be replaced. Typically, we're lucky here in Edina, property owners, when their trees and commercial areas die, they replace them on their own. Otherwise, it's on a complaint basis.
Thanks.
Commissioner Day?
Just a question around the boulevard improvement. When is that projected to take place? What's the timeline for that?
That would be as part of a building permit for the building, so they would do all the grading and landscaping at that time.
Yeah. So, sorry, maybe I misunderstood. I thought that there was a city project to, for Metro Boulevard, right?
Yes. I don't have the timing for when that's going to occur, but there is a sidewalk planned within the pedestrian plan, so I, sorry, I don't have a year for...
Yeah, I just was trying to establish a gap in time potentially between them, if there's no sidewalk built there with this plan, how soon would we get a sidewalk there as part of the overall Metro Boulevard improvement kind of thing? That's why I asked the question, but...
Yeah, that's the, part of the issues with the Cahill District here is we're lacking for sidewalks.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, well, welcome the applicant team up. If you have a presentation, introduce yourself, address, all that good stuff. You got a material board, those always help.
Thank you, Chair Bennett, and the Commission, and first Director Teague. I think he covered it, Carrie covered it really well. I'm Ben Krasnick with the development team. This is Chris Whitehouse, the architect, the designer. And yeah, I think we covered most of, mostly just want to ask, answer questions for you. And maybe, Chris, you want to walk through your, your materials board, if that's...
Hold it up, we can't see it now.
Sure.
We're not that tall like you.
Yeah, should be relatively self-explanatory once you have the rendering up here. We're going with, this is the gray stone for the majority of the building, changing to this lighter tan-colored stone under the windows there. This is aluminum, it's a faux wood-looking thing, longboard or similar. That's the dark part up above. And then the storefront windows and the accent metal would be this dark bronze that you see up here. And one of the other requirements, if you can go back to the, yeah, this, the facade that faces Metro Boulevard had to be 75% glass, and we did hit that number, so. Did you want to talk about anything else about the building?
I know that, so there was a lot of discussion last time about the safety aspect, and I just want to maybe touch a little bit how we addressed that. So what we ended up doing is moving the accessway into the property. I don't know if you mentioned that, Carrie, but yeah, so this moved about 20, 30 feet to the north, so there's a little additional expense with that, but you know, we're staying true to our, true to our word. We think, you know, safety is really critical for us here.
All right. Appreciate the changes. Any questions? Commissioners?
Sorry, maybe I missed it. There's not parking underneath. This access is for trash on the one photo. I missed that there's a garage door.
So this building is designed to, sorry, let's see if we can go here, here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so first, probably 75% is going to be used day one for enodontics. The back, probably one-fourth, is expansion space. So honestly, there's probably going to be a golf simulator back there starting out, but someday in the future, it'll either be enodontics or some other complimentary use, like a general dentist.
Got it, but that's not a garage door to underground parking or...
Nope.
Nope.
Commissioner Elkire?
Thanks for coming tonight. The transportation study recommended a, recommended bike parking, and the city's invested a lot of money in bike connections to this area, and you've got lots of residential areas to the north and to the east across the highway. So is that part of your plan?
Yes, I'm planning to meet that. There's one stall required.
One for bikes? So is that parking for one bike?
Yeah. Usually, we end up with three stalls, but yeah, one is required.
So is your plan one or three, or you don't know that yet?
Can we go back? We did, we did add those, whether or not they got onto this presentation, I guess I'm not 100% sure, but we were going to, I did ask Civil to add that. I'm not sure if they got that on this right now, but no, we, we do plan on having at least two or three things where you could park up four, six bikes.
That's great. Thank you.
We'll allow for more than one.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? No? All right, thank you, guys. This is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to that. I'll give the instructions for those who are tuning in remotely, so then members of the audience here can come forward while you're waiting in the queue. So please call 312-535-8110 and enter access code 2633-139-0260. The password is 5454, and then you'll press star three when you're ready to speak. I can't do that without smiling. That's a lot of instructions. All right. So again, please state your full name, address. You have three minutes to speak. We'll open it up to people who are here in person that like to testify. Please come up to one of the podium. All right, seeing none. We'll give it a minute or so for those who are tuning in remotely if they'd like to speak. Again, press star three on your telephone keypad when, if you're ready. Give you a minute.
Nobody is in the queue at this time, so we'll wait one minute.
Okay.
It has been one minute, and nobody has joined the queue, so I believe we are safe to proceed.
Welcome a motion to close a public hearing.
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. All right, bring it back to the Commission to deliberate and open any motions. In full transparency, my wife works for the development team, so I am abstaining from this vote.
All right, thank you. So I know, thank you for your presentation. It was pretty straightforward to me. I know the last time you guys were here, you had some ideas of what you wanted to do, you shared a lot of your input, we talked through it. Some of the biggest concerns, of course, was just the parking on the front side, and I think you guys addressed that by shifting it more internally. And then, of course, that kind of pushed the building south a little bit more, and so there's the need for that variance. I was, so I liked that part. I was concerned with the height being 10 feet. But then, you know, when we, when you explained that the transparency section, the waiting area, you know, was a lot bigger, you bring a lot of light in, that's very consistent with that general region, with the 75% transparency requirement. So I thought that was good. Overall, I don't have any major concerns at all that are jumping out at me, given the variance requests here and what you guys are trying to build. So I'm leaning very positive on this one, because you did take the feedback and make some adjustments and came back with a plan that was improved from the last one. So, so thank you for doing that.
Thanks. Commissioner Padilla.
I think when you first came to us with a sketch plan, it was a good plan. I think you listened, and I think it's a better plan now, and I'm fully supportive.
Just go down the line.
Yeah. So I guess I'll echo what the, my two previous commissioners said here, and especially the things that Commissioner Smith brought up. I think it has improved. I mean, you've gotten rid of the parking in the front, and I think it sort of meets the ideal of having the tall front with the big windows and everything. So if, for example, in the future, a build, a building gets built next to it, it would, it would look like it matched, and it would look like what we want for the future. So, you know, I think we, you know, as a commission, as a city, we need to make sure, not worry so much about whether it looks like it fits in today, because that's not our goal. Our goal is the future. We're a planning commission. So I want to make sure it looks good, and not just looks good, it fits in for the reasons we want it. Now, I think the reason that we wanted 20 feet for the entire, you know, first floor of the building was because of the Southdale guidelines. And I think the idea there, and you know, it could apply here, so I'm sort of torn on this one point, but you know, I think the ideal would have been a much larger building here. And, you know, for all the reasons I said for the, for the last meeting, or the last presentation before us in terms of climate change and whatnot, it makes more sense to have a taller building here. Doesn't seem like that's going to happen, but I think the stuff that you guys have proposed in terms of removing the parking and, and having a tall glass front entrance will help make it fit in with buildings that we want there in the future. I think one thing this shows, though, is, is how overparked our city is, and how, you know, we don't have to have a minimum parking requirement because business owners will build whatever parking they think their customer needs, you know? That was necessary when we were trying to get rid of our streetcars and put cars in here. Doesn't seem like a big issue anymore. And that, you know, landowners can cut off whole sections of the parking lot and put a building in. So anyway, so I'm generally in favor of this. Thank you.
Yeah, me too. I'm, I'm very much in favor, as long as you have the, the bike rack in there. The one thing I wanted to point out, and it's not so much for the applicant as for us, is that, and it's kind of piggybacking on what Commissioner Miranda was saying. It's disappointing that we, we don't need to go too deep into this, but it's disappointing that we don't have a small area plan for Cahill. Because if we don't have a small area plan for Cahill, nothing against this project, but we, it, it doesn't fit in with a small area plan. We're not going to have a say in how this area develops if we don't have a small area plan. And I think one of the best opportunities for this particular part of the Cahill district is office residential that shares parking. And this is not that. It's a great project, but this is not that. And the more we fill up the horrible surface parking lots in Cahill with things that are not intentional, I'm concerned that we'll wake up 20 years from now and it won't be what we wanted it to be today. So that's just a, I guess, a note of caution for us as we work together, but I support the project. Thanks for coming tonight.
Down this way, any comments? Commissioner Felton?
I appreciate that, Commissioner Alcar, and I completely understand. And I also want to commend you for moving the parking lot around. The easiest thing to do is kind of change an asphalt parking lot. And there is going to be a building, a street frontage without parking in front of it, close to Metro Boulevard. So it might not be what ultimately we want Cahill to be, but at least it's a step towards having a, a street front with just green space in front of it. So I see it as a, as a step forward, and I'm in support of it as well.
Any other comments or? Welcome a motion.
A motion. Motion to recommend the city council approve the request? I'm just reading the ad.
Second. Maybe we'll just do a roll call vote again. Just start over there. Yeah, you.
Aye.
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 Aye. Abstained.
Aye.
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 All right, it passes. Good luck on the project. Thank you so much for taking our feedback and incorporating it wisely. Looks great. Thank you. All right, that's it for public hearings. So that's awesome. We'll move to chair and member comments. Who's got them?
I have one.
All right, Commissioner Felton.
League of Women Voters was having their, what do they call it, when they all get together and kind of talk about for? No, Hennepin County Commissioner. So we can all watch it tomorrow or later on, because the vote is coming up.
When did you say the forum was? I didn't hear the first.
The League of Women Voters is having their debate tonight for.
Tonight, oh, okay.
Yeah. And so I would, I would have been there if I, I was planning on it, because I thought this was going to be on Wednesday. So it'll be a good thing to watch, because it'll be good to watch them all debate each other.
Commissioner Padilla.
On a lighthearted note, I've spoken before about how I think Centennial Lakes is the gem of Edina, and it just got better because they got swan boats. So.
I saw that yesterday.
There were always paddle boats, but now they have the white swan ones like in Boston.
I haven't seen the signs yet. I've looked, I, I want to know the answer to that, and I would imagine it's a yes.
Are they side-by-side ones? Like you have two people?
Yeah.
So Commissioner Miranda and Councilmember Pierce could go for a nice ride?
If I could interject quick, I think there's a contest for naming them. So I believe you have until tomorrow to submit your name suggestions.
That is a great, thank you. That's great news to share. It's good use of land or water above land. Any other, yeah, Commissioner Alcar?
Two, two quick things. I mean, I can't help, I mean, I can't help but get a chuckle out of this image that's on our screen right now. I wasn't here with the sketch plan before it. It's, it just seems somehow funny and slightly ironic to have a new parcel and requiring off-street parking in the middle of a sea of unused surface parking. It's just, I know why we do these things, but it just seems so comical. And then the second thing is, just kind of follow up to our work session before. So we have our zoning text and our zoning maps in the city of Edina, and across the country, there are 30,000 zoning jurisdictions who also have their codes and their maps. And it's, it's, it's a jungle. There's no way you could try to characterize zoning in the United States, because all 30,000 of those zoning jurisdictions do it differently, say things differently, organize things differently. You saw the conversation we had about how our hierarchy and how it's organized. Everybody does it differently. So state legislatures, for example, have a very hard time figuring out where affordable housing is allowed in their own state, because they can't see it unless they're going to go through every single zoning code for every single jurisdiction within their state. So preamble to an organization called the National Zoning Atlas, which if you haven't heard of it, I would encourage you to go to their website and just spend 10 minutes and take a look. It's, the, the URL is zoningatlas.org, and their goal is to democratize, demystify, and digitize local zoning codes across the country. I worked on the project in Utah for about a year, and there's a project here to do this in Minnesota, but it's currently stalled out. They probably ran out of money, because that's the way these projects typically go and fits and starts. But anyway, if you're interested in that sort of thing, I think it's fascinating, and just take a visit to their website. There's a, I don't know, five or eight-minute video that talks about what the project is about. So that's it for today. Thank you.
All right? Yeah. Commissioner.
Okay, I wanted to take a moment and thank our police officers after hearing about the Minnetonka shooting and what happened with all of that. Yesterday, I did a cop ride-along, because I have a buddy that's in the Golden Valley Police Department, and he was actually one of the officers that responded to that. He was on one of the SWAT teams that was there, and he was telling me about it. One of his sheriff buddies was one of the officers that was shot, and he was shot in the hand. And a lot of these things you don't think about, because I feel like lately everything has been so polarized with a lot of issues, and we just end up unappreciating, or a lot of these, a lot of people just go by unappreciated that I think should be appreciated. And he was telling me, in Golden Valley, their police department is severely understaffed, and they used to have 31 people there, and then now they have, I believe, 17 full-time officers. And he says that they currently don't have enough police to have a full-time daytime staff, and so they're kind of having sheriffs help staff their department, and then now they only have full-time night shift officers. And it makes me think about how important it is to appreciate a lot of people that are helping keep our cities, our areas, safe, and that I think more people should just have an open mind and think about stuff on a deeper level than we would usually do.
Thank you so much for sharing. Kind of on that note, at the city council meeting last week, they did recognize Public Service Officer of the Year, Police Officer and First Responder of the Year. So it's, it's nice to see Edina feels like they, maybe relative to others, really do appreciate kind of their public service officers and staff. But thank you so much for bringing that up. It's really important to keep in mind.
Well, it is important to note that Golden Valley Police Department had a horrible racism problem, so there's a lot of history there. I suggest you look into that.
And I guess on that note too, you know, we're meeting on Thursday here, just to be, you know, kind of inclusive and aware of Ramadan ending yesterday, so, so it's, you know, it's good to be a part of that and adapt our schedules accordingly. I know there was maybe something you wanted to share with ADUs. There was a presentation last week, well-photographed presentation.
Jimmy called me out here, I don't know why, but, okay. So last week, oh yeah, actually, we had a really good meeting with city staff. We presented our ADU ordinance, and many of you actually showed up for that, so I definitely appreciate you guys coming out and cheering in the crowd and giving testimony. I thought it was a good presentation. I think the city council asked some really interesting questions, right? Things that we didn't really consider before. There were questions around, you know, attic space being converted. There was questions about, you know, screening, for example, because there were some concerns about how much does it impose on neighbors' lots and everything. And so we had some really good dialogue on that. We then had some further meetings with, with our city council, just to kind of talk through some of the items and bring some more clarity. But overall, they decided to move forward and, I guess, close the public hearing, but keep the public comments going until the 16th. So I'm really hoping that on the 16th, when they come together again, we will present, you know, get any additional questions, answer and respond to them, and hopefully they make a decision. You know, this is something that, we talk about missing middle quite a bit. ADUs is, is, is something that is a, you know, gives us more options for housing in the city, as you guys know really, really well. Folks are looking for it. Neighbors have been asking about it. So I, I really hope that, you know, we do assuage any concerns there and, and we get it passed. So I'm really keeping my fingers crossed for the 16th. Again, come out, and I'm sure there'll be some public comment sections, and you guys could come and give some feedback. I'm not going to give the mic away if, if I do give a presentation. But it was, it was great, and I look forward to getting this decision made, and hopefully it's going to be in a positive direction. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, staff comments. Oh, yeah, Commissioner Miranda.
I just want to mention that we had our, the Lincoln and Londonary Small Area Plan. We had our first meeting with the consultants. So we had our kickoff with them yesterday. So that went very well. They have some really good work ahead of them, and it was, I thought, a very informative meeting. So we're going to meet first, they're planning the first meeting with the residents who were, who we selected to be on the, on the small area plan. So that'll be our next meeting. We're hoping to make it a double meeting, like a three-hour sort of thing that would be onsite. That was their idea. I thought it's a good idea. So, so that, that should be pretty exciting.
Thanks. Kerry?
Just quickly, there's the one project that's out there that you all made a recommendation on is the Southdale Office Center. They requested a delay at the last meeting, so the public hearing has not been held, and it's, by understanding, they're requesting another delay. Don't know the specifics of, are they revising the plan? I don't know, but council hasn't taken action yet on that one, and the public hearing has not yet been held. We're getting close to the end of the 120 days rule, where the city has to take action. I believe that expires council's second meeting in May, so I'll keep you updated.
Cool, thank you. We have a full house here tonight, so just a reminder, really thankful for everyone's service here. You know, we had our photo before to, to celebrate who we are, but really appreciate the team we have here and you guys' sacrifice and commitment to the city. I think it shows. I think we have the best group in the last 50 years, although I wasn't around to attest to many of those. But I believe it firmly. So last thing, adjournment, anyone?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 So move. Meeting is adjourned.